I'd like to call the meeting in order. Ariel, would you call the roll, please?
Howie Glenville.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston. Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Can you folks hear us? All right. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
And to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, if you have any conflict of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve an amended agenda? We'll be adding new business item G to the agenda. It'll be contract 2023-13 with Houston Law Office PC for legal representation fee and engagement agreement effective November 20th, 2023, and automatically renewable.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda, adding new business item G to approve contract 2023-13 with Houston Law Office PC for legal representation fee and engagement agreement effective 11/20/23 and automatically renewable.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November 6th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 6th council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between for $124,683.09.
Second.
Bill. Deborah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve current claims of $75,705.65.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public, is there anyone that would like to address the council? Come on down. So we limit communications from the public to five minutes. If you'd share your name and address with us.
I can't hear you, sir.
Say, will you limit the?
If I could understand, it's written right here. Got that.
Okay.
So, two things, folks.
If you could share your name and address with us for the record, please?
Give me a chance there, boss, okay? First of all, my name is Jeffrey Larive. Second point, first point actually, is thank you for those of you that are speaking into your microphones. Those of you who are sitting back here, I can't hear you. And my question is, is the only time the public can comment on the proceedings is during the public hearing portion? Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we have questions about disposing of 25,000 gallons of effluent daily into our facility, we have to ask at the next meeting. Is that correct?
It would be now that you would raise your opinion on that?
Right. No, I want to hear what the discussion is first.
Okay.
I don't have an opinion until I hear from my elected officials. I'm just asking if that's the only time we can communicate.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a 7:10 public hearing. If there's anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is when I finally get to announce officially that we have a nursing program in Fall River County. There was an article in the paper last week, and it did mention that all the school districts that are in the county can participate. That was a misstatement on my part. Anyone can apply to be in the program. It doesn't matter what county you're from, Custer, Ogallala, Lakota. I know that Western Dakota Tech is going to focus on those with CNAs who are working in the field first, but students and schools can start their prereq courses in the spring of 2024. And secondly, Shedco won the bid for the Energize Conference to be held in May of 2024. That should bring about 140 to 150 participants in the conference, as well as their families, I hope, to the town. They'll be here for two days, and I would like to encourage them to stay for another evening and experience everything that we have to offer. Any questions?
Energize Conference, we actually put it before Memorial Weekend, so hopefully they'll spend the whole weekend. The conference is Wednesday, Thursday.
We tried to sandwich it in between school letting out and Memorial Day weekend so that we could get entire families. And it's on a Wednesday, Thursday, so that means they could potentially stay until Friday evening.
I will say a little more about the Energize Conference during my mayor's report.
Thank you.
Thank you. We still have a few minutes before our public hearing. We have time to go ahead and address our personnel issues. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through K?
Make a motion to approve personnel actions A through K.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Pardon?
We have three minutes.
Well, I'll take the time to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is a big event, recognizing the 2023 Class 11B state football champions. So I appreciate everyone coming. Once you're here, we do lock the door, so you're not going to be able to leave until the meeting is completely over. We expect that to be somewhere around 9:30 or 10 o'clock. I brought snacks, okay?
We rarely have this much company, so it's nice to have a captive audience.
Did anyone bring lettuce and tomatoes? Leave it up to you for what? Anyone have a good story they'd like to share?
Did any of you attend the play this last weekend? I thought it was great. Cool.
This is really just a patient's test, so you're doing well.
All right, so we're at 7:10. I'd like to open a public hearing to act on the transfer application from Woolies Western Grill to Jalapeno Grill LLC for an on-sale liquor license to be used at 1648 Highway 18. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address that?
From Jalapenos.
Counsel? Any questions, any comments?
Just for the benefit of the public, what's being asked for here and discussed during this hearing is there's an existing liquor, on-sale liquor license that was held by Woolies. State law requires that that license be transferred to the new operator, which in this case, the requestor is Jalapeno Grill LLC. So if anyone would like to speak for or against it, this is the opportunity for public input on this issue. It is a rather standard and typical activity that council goes through in dealing with various liquor licenses as required by the state, but again, it is an opportunity for public input.
Anyone? Counsel? All right, go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:12. I need a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the transfer application from Woolies Western Grill.
Make a motion to approve the transfer application from Woolies Western Grill to Jalapeno Grill LLC for an on-sale liquor license to be used at 1648 Highway 18.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. That brings us to our proclamation. Office of the Mayor, Hot Springs, South Dakota proclamation. 2023 Class 11B South Dakota State Football Champions. Whereas the Hot Springs High School football team is the 2023 Class 11B state champions, and whereas the most valuable running back in the 2023 championship game is Braden Peterson, and whereas the most valuable lineman in the 2023 championship game is Caleb Rickenback, and whereas the Joe Roby Most Valuable Player of the Championship Game is Cameron Majeski, and whereas the Class 11B All-American, Class 11B Most Valuable Player is Cameron Majeski, and whereas the Class 11B Coach of the Year is Ben Kramer, and whereas there are many other players, coaches, and support staff that contributed to the 2023 championship run. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Hot Springs and the Hot Springs Council, that on each November 10th, the 2023 Hot Springs football team be recognized as the 2023 Class B South Dakota State Football Champions. So we have three pieces of paper that make up the proclamation. The next thing that I would like to do is actually acknowledge every player, coaching staff, and support staff that contributed to this 2023 state championship. I talked with Coach Kramer today in the hopes that I don't butcher somebody's name. So if I do, please let me know. It's important to me that your name is recognized appropriately. So what I would ask, that as I read your name, go ahead and stand up, and please stay standing until we get through everybody. So our first player is number one, Cameron Majeski, a senior running back linebacker. Player number two, Braden Peterson, senior running back linebacker. Number three, Colin Iverson, senior quarterback linebacker. Number four, Matt Close, senior wide receiver, defensive back. Number five, Connor Kramer, sophomore, running back linebacker. Number seven, Josh Kleinsauer, senior tight end, defensive back. Number 10, Moads Kerr, senior tight end, defensive back. Did I get your first name right?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 11, Kyle Fisher, freshman, quarterback linebacker. Number 12, Caleb Kleinsauer, freshman, wide receiver, defensive back. Number 13, Kale Rask, senior tight end, defensive back. Did I get your name correct?
All right.
Number 14, this is one I had questioned, Grant Heil, sophomore, quarterback, defensive back. Number 16, Lakota Schaefer, sophomore, wide receiver, defensive back. Number 19, Chaney Klippenstein, senior tight end, defensive back. Number 20, Blake Haynes, senior wide receiver, defensive back. Number 22, Carl Stanton, sophomore, wide receiver, defensive back. Number 24, Clancy Kupel, sophomore, running back linebacker. Did I get that one right?
Yeah.
That doesn't sound like I did. Is it Kupel?
Yeah.
All right. Clancy Kupel. Number 25, Derek Mills, freshman, running back linebacker. Number 27, Colt Madron, sophomore, wide receiver. Did I get that one right?
Yeah.
Number 30, Jared Morgan, junior, running back linebacker. Number 33, Hunter Coons, freshman, running back linebacker. That's another one. Did I get it?
Yeah.
Number 44, Jace Waters, junior, running back defensive back. Number 51, Dawson Kleppi, senior, offensive linebacker. Number 52, Brant Pearson, person, freshman, offensive line, defensive line. Number 55, Aiden Janice, junior, offensive line, defensive line. Here's another one. Andrew Yuland, senior, offensive line, defensive line? Correct me where I'm wrong. Number 57, Caleb Rickenback, senior, offensive line. Number 58, Gabe Mauer, junior, offensive linebacker. Did I get that one?
Yep.
Number 60, Hayden Dear, sophomore, offensive line, defensive line. Number 62, Sheldon Negabauer, freshman, offensive line, defensive line. Number 63, Brody Jerza, sophomore, offensive line, defensive line. Number 65, Bryant Bryson Venables, sophomore, offensive line, defensive line. Number 66, Kayden Hanson, senior, offensive line, defensive line. Number 67, Corbin Book, senior, offensive line, defensive line? How'd I do on that one? Are you sure? It didn't sound like I did. Is it Bach? Book? All right, thank you. Number 70, Holden Looper, freshman, offensive line, defensive line? 72, Max Sam, sophomore, offensive line, defensive line? Number 77, Nathaniel Horton, freshman, offensive line, defensive line? Number 78, Wyatt Nellen, sophomore, offensive line, defensive line? How about that one?
Yeah.
Number 79, Owen White, sophomore, offensive line, defensive line? Number 81, Jayden Whiteface, sophomore, tight end, defensive back? Number 82, Jayden Koffler, sophomore, wide receiver, defensive back? And number 83, Keller Peterson, sophomore, tight end, defensive line? Did I miss any players? Very good. All right, end of the coaching staff. Head coach, Ben Kramer. Assistant coach, Mike Close. Assistant coach, Max Jerza. Assistant coach, Levi Klippenstein. Assistant coach, Mike Molitor. Assistant coach, Ross Norton. Assistant coach, Josh Rickenback. Assistant coach, Kayden Shanklin. Then we get down to the staff. Athletic trainer, Jim Whale. Manager, Carter Hallz. Manager, Anna Hilstad. And video, Weston Klippenstein. Did I miss anybody? So, ladies and gentlemen, you're 2023 Class 11B South Dakota State Football Champions. Coach Kramer? Could you come on down, please?
The fun's not over. Well, maybe it is.
Hey, I've asked one of those things.
I see computer problems.
Forever.
Some of those guys.
Computer problems.
I do the computers at the school.
Oh.
I see a name, and I think, oh man, he's got computer issues.
All right, so that brings us to our first new business item. I'd mentioned that we amended the agenda to add new business item G to consider a new city attorney. I'd like to move that new business item G to the first agenda item so that we can actually have our attorneys officially join us for our council meeting. So if I could get that motion, Bill, that you read?
Okay. Make a motion to approve contract 2023-13 with Houston Law Office PC for legal representation fee and engagement agreement effective 11/20/23 and automatically renewable.
Second.
Discussion? So counsel, Ariel handed out the contract to you folks before the meeting started, and on the contract, it's showing entered into this 21st day of October 23. So we'll be changing that to the 20th day of November 23. Any other discussion? Did you get the first and second? All right. I believe two of our attorneys are out there. I think I saw William and Austin. Okay. William, what's the correct way to pronounce your last name?
Houston.
Houston, all right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
We will have an executive session after the meeting, or at the end of our committee report. We will have an executive session after the meeting or at the end of our committee reports. And we'll need to have our council join us for that executive session, please. All right, so we'll jump back up to New Business Item A. It's a discussion only.
Bob, you want to do ordinance?
Oh. We should take a vote, shouldn't we? All in favor?
We did.
I haven't done the ordinances yet.
Ordinances.
Oh, thank you. Yes, ordinances. All right, our first ordinance, A, Second Reading of Ordinance 1251 and Ordinance Revising Title 15.
Make a motion to approve the Second Reading of Ordinance 1251 and Ordinance Revising Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 155, Zoning Code, Adding 155.032 F2, Plan Unit Development Number 2 Martin Tracks.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, thank you.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Yes.
Travis Orbach?
Yes.
Al Glenville?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll try to settle down and get on track here. Take us to our second ordinance B, First Reading of Ordinance 1252.
I make a motion to approve the First Reading Ordinance of 1252, a supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Discussion.
In our packets, we've got a listing of all of the departments and line items that are being supplementally appropriated. And just, I guess, for the public's benefit, these items are mostly being supplemented from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. Is that correct, Ariel? Thank you.
So we typically do these, one at the beginning of the year and then one at the end of the year. By codified law, we have to have a balanced budget. And it's through these supplemental appropriations that we make sure that we have that balanced budget. Any other questions, discussions? Ariel, would you call the roll, please?
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Yes.
Al Glenville?
Yes.
Travis Orbach?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Now we'll move on to New Business Item A, Discussion Only. Allow the City of Hermosa to dispose of up to 25,000 gallons per day of effluent wastewater into our wastewater treatment system, paying the commercial waste hauler rates established by the fee schedule on a per-day basis instead of a per-load basis. A couple of weeks ago, Jerry and Linda from the City of Hermosa approached me about the possibility of them dumping the water out of their lagoons into our wastewater system. This isn't raw sewage. Hermosa has three lagoons that the water from their sewer plant goes into. So this is the final lagoon. It's mostly water. It's not pure water. It's not fresh water. It's water that, when it's collected, when they pump it off, they actually have a screen on the end of the suction hose that also keeps the hose itself off the bottom of the lagoon so that it doesn't suck up any sludge or whatever that may be at the bottom of the lagoon. So as far as sewer water is concerned, this is the best sewer water. This is the kind of water that typically would be land-applied when the lagoons fill up. But because of Hermosa's growth, they're not able to land-apply this water anymore. And they're working with the Department of Energy and Natural Resources in the state of South Dakota to help design a new lagoon system so they don't have to haul this waste off anymore. So, talked with Tracy, talked with Jason down at the wastewater treatment plant. Hermosa is looking at hauling about 18,000 gallons a day to Hot Springs, four to five days a week. Our plant has the capacity to handle that much effluent. What they're asking, currently, any waste haulers in our city ordinance were set up for waste haulers to dump at the plant. Currently, a waste hauler for the first 1,000 gallons, it costs them $15. For the subsequent 1,000 gallons on a load, it costs them $450. Council will consider, when we look at our fees for 2024, to double each of those amounts. We'll go from $15 for the first 1,000 to $30 for the first 1,000, from $450 for the subsequent 1,000 gallons to $9 for subsequent gallons, 1,000 gallons. What Hermosa has asked us to do is consider waiving that first $15,000 or that first $15 or $30 per 1,000 fee. The way we're looking at it is that if Hermosa could haul one truckload of 18,000 gallons of effluent to us, we would only charge them one time for that first 1,000 gallons. Well, they're not able to haul that much in a single load. So they're going to have to bring two, three, four loads a day to us. What they're asking is that we waive that first 1,000 gallon fee. So we would charge them a single day fee for that first 1,000 gallons. So it'd either be a single $450 or a single $9. And we're letting you know now that that's what we've talked about. We talked about it on Public Works. I believe Public Works is going to recommend that we go ahead and do that. But this is your opportunity to ask any other questions that you want over the next two weeks before we actually bring it to you as a motion.
Were we the first ones they considered?
I don't know.
One of the things that Tracy talked about and that the mayor's alluded to is the current wastewater treatment facility was built to handle the capacity for when Hot Springs was much larger, that it had when the VA was fully up and running. We had, I think, closer to 5,000 or 6,000 population, we had the VA. And so some of the issues that we're struggling with at the wastewater plant right now are because of low flow. So this actually helps us out by increasing the daily flow. And as the mayor said, it's good water. It's not raw sewage that we would get from a third-party hauler that's emptying septic systems. This is third-stage treated water that would either be discharged or go into land farming, if I understand it, so.
Yes.
It's high-quality water, as wastewater goes. It may reduce the odor problem that we have coming off the clarifier at the wastewater plant right now. We're looking at ways we can reduce that. And we've all, Tracy's always told us, well, one of the ways to reduce the smell down there is to increase the flow. Well, how do you do that other than just wasting water into the system? And so this is almost a gift to help us increase the flow at really no cost to the city, but it does provide a revenue stream to that enterprise fund. So it's really a beneficial partnership with Hermosa.
They're looking at maybe around six months, maybe a little more, until they can get their new lagoons designed and built. So this isn't a permanent solution for them. It's to help out another municipality with the problem they have. As Bill said, increase the efficiency of our plant for a little bit and generate some revenue off of doing it.
What's the estimated revenue?
Well, if we do...
Was it $450 for 1,000?
It's $450 for the first 1,000.
$4.50?
$4.50 for the first 1,000. So if they're bringing us 18,000 gallons a day, then it would be... No, it's $15 for the first 1,000 and then $450 for each 1,000-gallon unit after that. So there would be 17 times $450.
About $92 per day if they bring it out.
You would think the weight of those trucks coming in and out of the city would require more compensation than that. I don't know. I was just thinking of the hauling, you know, on our roads. Say again?
Fees increased January 1st with our fee schedule, anyway.
What fees?
All.
This particular fee, council, it will be on the fee schedule to increase, you passed in the wastewater ordinance, to increase the rates. And the proposed rate would be $30 for the first 1,000 and $9 for each 1,000 units after that. The trucks they're hauling are typically not going to be any larger than some private haulers we have now. They're looking at about 6,000 gallons a load. So it's not going to be the full 18,000, you know, per load. So it's going to be very similar to the trucks that are, commercial haulers that are hauling waste in now.
That's why they're doing multiple loads, because the state won't allow that heavy of a load on state highways if they would do the whole 18,000, from what I understood.
Do they have an actual test of the composition of the liquid?
They do, and they gave those results to Tracy and Jason. And they had said that it's very close to the water that is going out to our lagoons.
What happens if they're not, if we don't do this? They're just, they're stuck in a tough spot?
Yes, they have to find somebody else to take their effluent to.
That's why I asked that question, in case we decided not to. Do they have anybody else they talk to? You know, just in case.
All right, any other questions?
I had an employee share concerns with me about how quickly we're burning through our pumps and how this might make it go faster. Did anyone ask you guys that or share any similar?
No, in the discussion with Tracy and Jason, and Jason is the plant manager, that issue was never raised.
That's good.
Typically, what tears up pumps is particulate in the fluid stream. And that's what's missing from this fluid stream is particulate.
And then you also referenced, or you implied that we need more wastewater to make things run a little more smoothly at the plant, essentially.
Yes, as Bill had said, the plant, the original design was when the VA was fully staffed. So they were putting a lot more wastewater into the system. And since about 1996, the VA has downsized significantly. So Mr. Larive, if you would like to join the lady up front, it's obvious she has a question for us. So...
I actually don't have a question about this topic, but my name is Carrie Sanders, and I'm here representing Tana White from the Hot Springs FFA.
Okay.
And it was my understanding that she had contacted the city office about the Hot Springs FFA Chapter Egg Issues Team presenting to you guys tonight. And so I was just questioning that.
Okay. Are they here?
They are.
All right. So yes, she had contacted me and I'd mentioned that, you know, possibly tonight, you know, with communications from the public. So with the council's indulgence, I apologize, I didn't write your name down.
My name is Carrie Sanders.
What Carrie is talking about is I got an email from... Tana?
Yep.
Is that the correct way to say it?
Yep.
Tana White with the school, with the FAA group. And she had asked if their group could make a presentation about carbon offset. They've qualified for the state-level competition on December 3rd and 4th. And they need to do five public forums and presentations prior to the state-level competition. Because she didn't say anything, I just, I wasn't sure that she was here. And I'd indicated that if she came, you know, I'd try to work her in. So with the council's permission, I would ask that they give the group an opportunity to make that presentation. So we're done with discussion only? Yes.
I'm cool.
Counsel? All right.
Okay, I'll invite the kids up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Come on down.
If you can use the microphone, it would be best.
Okay, hello, my name's Kyle Sanders, and I'm here representing the Hot Springs FFA, and we're going to give you our egg issues presentation on the Carbon Offset Program.
Hello and welcome to the 2023 Egg Producers Conference. I'm your president, Ashlyn Elsher. And our topic today is the Carbon Offset Program. And our question is, if the Carbon Offset Program were to become mandatory, would it cause an agricultural entities in rural America a loss in productivity or an increase in profits? First, a background on the Carbon Offset Program. The EPA has several cap and trade, or allowance-based, carbon credit programs it is managing. But what is a carbon credit? A carbon credit is like a certificate that companies can buy or sell that represents a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and a way for companies to offset their carbon footprint by supporting projects that reduce emissions. This is important because greenhouse gas emissions are rising in major sectors globally. And if not reduced, it will hit 35.6 degrees Fahrenheit. The U.S. currently has two mandated emissions trading systems. The first is the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, and it is in effect in 11 U.S. states. And the second is in California's AB 32 Cap and Trade Program. Now, this topic has been up for some hot debate. With me today, I have some speakers on both sides of this issue and how mandating a carbon offset program could affect agriculture. Our first speaker will be Kiana Lewis from the EPA.
Good evening, my name is Kiana Lewis, as said earlier. And as a representative of the Environmental Protection Agency, I believe in the Carbon Offset Program. I work with the EPA in Billings, Montana, and our regional office oversees Region A, including South Dakota. When a source is covered by an emissions trading program, such as a power plant, they are granted allowances that permit a specific amount of carbon and greenhouse gas emissions. Sources are compensated in various ways, such as through free limits or auctions depending on the program. Upon obtaining an allowance, an impacted source has the option to utilize it for compliance, trade it on the allowance market, or save it aside for future compliance. Of course, to make carbon offsets and trading programs successful, pollution must be monitored through accurate methods and produce effective data reports. Public data reports provide transparency and accountability to our programs, which encourages compliance. The EPA currently has several carbon offset programs... The EPA currently has several Carbon Offset Programs they are managing, the Cross State Air Pollution Control Makings, and the Acid Rain Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiana. Our next speaker is Kyle Sanders, a farmer from Oral, South Dakota.
Hello. My name is Kyle Sanders. I'm a sixth-generation farmer from Oral, South Dakota. I have seven pivots of irrigation corn and four pivots of irrigation alfalfa. According to USDA, eighty-seven percent of farmers use some sort of conservation tillage. Thirty-three percent of all farmers are strictly no-till. This year, a survey was done on large farms. Fifty-seven percent, they use a... They use a cover crop in some of their fields. Half of those farmers said they plant a cover crop in twenty-five percent or less of their fields. All carbon credit companies want farmers to use regenerative agriculture practices, which are practices of no-till farming and planting cover crops. Regenerative agriculture practices I can use is nutrient management techniques, which is applying the right amount of fertilizer at the right time using the right method. In addition, farmers can plant field buffers, such as trees and tall grass along their field edges. This will be especially important with fields bordering a body of water. The trees and grass will help prevent nutrient loss from the fields. They do this by filtering out and absorbing all the lost nutrients from the field. I'm in support of the Carbon Offset Program. With a program such as Indigo Ag, I can sell my carbon credits. They come to my farm, take measurements, and calculate how many carbon credits my farm will produce. After this, they let me know how much I will get paid for my carbon credits. Indigo Ag gets seventy, or twenty-five percent, sorry, and farmers get the other seventy-five percent. The farmers are prepaid for their carbon credits from the Climate Action Reserve, a California-based environmental organization that monitors the North American carbon market. They guarantee integrity and financial value to the people who they sell their carbon credits to. An Indiana family farmer said he made over fifty-two thousand dollars his first year selling carbon credits. All Carbon Offset Programs encourage farmers to use regenerative agriculture practices. This will reduce tillage and improve soil health. This will increase their number of carbon credits to sell in the future. Mandating the Carbon Offset Program will help farmers diversify their income. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Our next speaker is Zeta Keel, a rancher from Ogallala, Lakota County.
My name, my name is Zeta Keel, and I'm a rancher from Ogallala, Lakota County. I own a commercial cow-calf operation with my brother. I am in favor of the Carbon Offset Program. My sixty-five-hundred-acre ranch follows rotational grazing practices, and our native grasslands sequester point-three to one-point-seven metric tons per acre of carbon per year. As ranchers, we should have a way to get paid, too. Indigo Ag, the company Mr. Sanders mentioned, is primarily only paying carbon credits for farming practices, such as cover crops, reduced tillage, and diversifying crops, none of which apply to me as a cattle rancher. I did find a company called Grassroots Carbon, which is paying ranchers for carbon sequestration. They have paid out two million dollars to ranchers so far. Grassroots Carbon would pay me to participate by involving in regenerative rotational grazing with adaptive, multi-paddock grazing practices. Upfront, this would involve increased labor for my ranch, as well as the added expense of building new fences, adding water lines, and new tanks to each pasture. The other option that Grassroots Carbon provides me as a rancher to sell carbon credits will be their Native Grasslands Restoration Program, where I would reintroduce native grass species, as well as control invasives. I currently spend time controlling invasives on my haymeadows each summer. So perhaps this could be a way to help diversify my ranching income by being paid for carbon credits at the same time. I do see the benefits as a rancher for adding income to my ranch by selling carbon credits through programs such as Grassroots Carbon. However, I also have some concerns about the Offset Program. I worry about my increased prices on things such as trucking, or how it will impact the feedlot and meatpacking industries will likely have an increased burden by needing to purchase carbon credits rather than selling them. Those industries are still a vital part of the ag industry as a whole. It starts with me as a producer. But the other industries in agriculture having struggle from the Carbon Offset Program will eventually trickle down to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Zeta. Our next speaker is Donovan Shipley, a representative of the Dole Company in Brookings, South Dakota.
Hello. I'm Donovan Shipley from Brookings, South Dakota, a representative of the Dole Fruits Corporation and work with the branch in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I, along with the company, are against the transactions of these carbon credits. We have operations across the country and around the world in over ninety nations. We see firsthand the effects of a change in climate on the agricultural sector as one of the largest fruit producers in the world. Now, at Dole, we understand that not everyone believes in climate, or that it's not that important of an issue. However, we are willing to take that risk that ninety-seven percent of climate scientists believe is occurring as the result of human activities. Antarctica and Greenland have lost six-point-four trillion tons of ice since nineteen ninety, boosting global sea levels by at least point-seven inches. Now, this might seem like a small number, but it could be signs of things to gum. Many cities are at risk for sea levels rising and are facing issues already, like Amsterdam, Venice, and New Orleans. Many of our farms are located along similar coastal areas. We don't want to take those risks on our business. Our mission is to cut our fossil fuel-based packaging and zero fruit loss by the year 2025, and be net-zero admissions by 2030. For this missions, we currently participate in the carbon credit market and many other programs to accomplish this. The fact of the matter is that credits are just not as productive for us as other programs. Other programs have helped us overdouble our profits since we started implementing these sustainable practices and carbon credits. We're not a part of that increase in revenue. We have made good progress on our promises. And in 2021, we had twelve percent decrease from one-point-one-six million tons of global emissions. And by this time, eighty-nine percent of potential food loss was upcycled. While carbon credits were incentivizing at first their promise of profit, they did not help us tackle the real issue like other programs. These programs include using biogas, biogas, sorry, for energy and from, and food waste, and experimenting with carbon sequestration. On a forty-hectare regenerative pineapple farm in the Philippines, to find the best farming practices, these programs have produced results much more useful than those presented by credits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donovan. Our next speaker is Ray Sanders, a feedlot owner from Oral, South Dakota.
Hello. My name is Ray Sanders. I'm a feedlot owner and operator from Oral, South Dakota. I am against the use of carbon credits. I understand the need to limit, limit carbon emissions, but I am confused on why agriculture is being blamed for all the carbon emissions. In 2021, EPA conducted research that showed agriculture only makes up ten percent of the carbon emissions. All the people who aren't directly involved in agriculture want to blame this on agriculture because they don't think it directly affects them. Agriculture ignorance is one of the biggest problems in our country today. With the growing population, our increase in food is needed, and some people just don't understand how much food really is needed. With, with these practices of limiting herbicides and pesticides and fertilizers will decrease yield. For the, for the people who aren't concerned about the misuse and mishandling of pesticides, there are classes that are required to be taken before you can be given these products. Maybe we should add more products to this list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Our last speaker is Lizzie Rapp, owner slash operator of RT Trucking Company in Rapid City, South Dakota.
Hi, my name is Lizzie Rapp, and I'm the owner and operator of a cattle hauling company called RT Trucking. I'm against the Carbon Offset Program for the following reasons. The Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative is in eleven states in the mid-Atlantic and northeastern regions. The cost per metric ton of carbon dioxide emitted is five to six dollars. But in California, the cost can increase anywhere from fourteen to eighteen dollars. On average, a singular truck puts out two-hundred-and-twenty-three tons of carbon dioxide emissions. This will have a large impact on my company, on my company and others across the nation. It will cost us more to transport commodities around the U.S., and in turn, having a larger price for the consumer. My company transports cattle and grain from many ranches in South Dakota, as well as many parts of the Midwest. We are currently struggling with purchasing fuels to transport all of our, all of these commodities. With the added cost of carbon offsets, it would further burden my company, as we are large-scale, and many customers rely on us for their businesses to stay afloat. Thank you.
Thank you all for attending the 2023 Ag Producers Conference. Very compelling points and arguments here today. I hope you have all been educated and have gained a good understanding of our topic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you guys have any feedback on what we could do? What do you think we could do better to improve? What perspectives we could add, or anything that you think would make our presentation better?
Couple of points that I, questions that did come to mind for me. What is the current cost per ton of carbon?
The carbon credits aren't a publicly traded entity, so it's really hard to get that information.
I know, ten years ago, it used to be about two dollars a ton. What do you consider the CO2 equivalent for methane?
We don't really know that, sir. Do you think that's an important?
I know, it used to be considered that one ton of methane was the equivalent of, I think, twenty-nine tons of CO2 being emitted. So when you're talking about feedlots, that's a, regardless of which side of the discussion you're on, that's something to bring in. A challenge that somebody may want to make is, who pays for the carbon that's released either during controlled burns on public land or through unfriendly wildfires? Is that being quantified at all? And would any reduction efforts in agriculture be absolutely diminished by an uncontrolled wildfire, such as the Legion Lake Fire?
Okay, thank you. We'll actually probably add, add in part of that to our presentation. I think that would add a lot of good information to it. Thank you.
I think your public speaking is pretty good, but, but distance of the microphone, a little more confidence in your posture, looking towards the crowd that you're trying to draw in. You're the center of attention. Get their attention. Make them understand where you're coming from, what you feel, and most of all, if you're passionate about it, show it in your heart. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Good job, guys. Really good job.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Very well done.
So I do have a question for you. You had mentioned, if I made my notes correctly, that there are eleven states that currently participate in the Carbon Offset Program? Did I understand that correctly? Is South Dakota one of them? Okay. How long have we been doing that?
In South Dakota, it's not a required thing, but it's an option that's available.
Okay, all right. And to Councilman Pratt's comment, he struggled with the same thing, speaking into his microphone. So it hasn't been easy for him. He's been learning to do that better. So he's speaking from firsthand knowledge. It's not easy sometimes. Just, just pretend you're, you're at a karaoke party, and grab that microphone and be enthusiastic and make your case. Well done, thank you.
I wanted to, I was gonna say, I like your guys, the pros and cons that you guys bring in, like you're bringing both sides instead of just one, one side. I think that's good.
Did you choose which side you wanted, or was that chosen for you?
We kind of did. It kind of varied in between, and oftentimes we changed the rules. Like, our presentation now is completely different from how we presented it at first, at our first convention thing. But we've kind of kept the same sides going. Some of us did move against, or Donovan, he's not here today, so Sarah actually filled in for him. He was still with the Dole Company when we originally switched roles, but he did switch sides, and then he had to find opposing sides. So we've been mostly the same, choosing our sides, but we've also kind of been told how we should implement more into our thing.
What you guys read, are those actual case, or are those your own words?
Yeah, it's our own words and stuff that we've researched and stuff like that.
Yeah, thanks for your research. Thanks for your involvement in important issues. Keep it up.
Good luck, good luck.
Thank you for your presentation.
Carrie, thank you for bringing to my attention that they were here. I appreciate that. All right. So we'll get back to our new business. We'll go to new business item B. Authorize the finance officer to transfer the 2023 budgeted annual operating transfers.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to transfer the 2023 budgeted annual operating transfers from 602 Water, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, 604 Wastewater, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, funds to the 101 General Fund of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C. Assignment of a lease for airport land lease from Larry and Kathy Vetterman.
I make a motion to approve the assignment of lease for airport land lease from Larry and Kathy Vetterman to John and Lynn Mundorf. Original lease was dated October fifteenth, two thousand and seven, with Lawrence and Jeanette McIntyre. Transferred April tenth, two thousand and fourteen, to Larry and Kathy Vetterman.
Second.
Discussion? Didn't we have this prior discussion about something at the end of this whole thing, or? What, what were we talking about, Ariel?
This is an existing lease. We have a variety of leases, land leases at the airport. One of the reasons we redid the, the lease the way you approved is this particular lease is a thirty, or forty, or fifty-year lease that allows what we're doing here tonight. And it's, I think, a dollar a year versus the twelve cents a square foot a year that our current land lease is called for. And this is a legal lease that is still in effect and allows this transfer. So that's, but this is one of the reasons why we went to a more appropriate lease that we, that we approved here a couple of months ago.
Maybe I'm confused that we did a lot of leases.
Yeah.
I think Larry meant how this is an assignment of that original lease a few people back. So me and Larry spoke about how that assignment leaves the original people still liable.
Right.
Because it's not a new lease. So that, I think, is what Larry was trying to bring up.
Okay, sorry.
That's what I was trying to clarify in my head.
Do they, can they charge what they want? As long as you, we get the same amount, or how is it?
They actually sell, I think, the building. We just lease the land.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Thank you, Ariel. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item D. Hot Springs Municipal Airport Land Lease Agreement with Southern Hills Aviation.
I make a motion to approve the Hot Springs Municipal Airport Land Lease Agreement with Southern Hills Aviation, Ray Campbell, for the lease of land at the airport, approximately forty-five feet wide by, by thirty feet deep, which is one-half of Building Eight, for an initial term of thirty years, effective November twenty-first, 2023, to be prorated for the first year, and then billed annually at twelve cents per square foot beginning the January of each year.
Second. Discussion?
Is, is Building Eight, is that the one that was just recently completed?
No, this is one of the older buildings out there. It's about three buildings north of the new city hangar.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E. New business item E. Approve Contract Change Order Number 1 with Freedom Construction.
Make a motion to approve Contract Change Order Number 1 with Freedom Construction, Inc., for the replacement of the Mueller Center metal roofs. The change order extends the contract completion date from 11/15/23 to 12/5/23.
Second.
Discussion? So we have been Tracy has been working very hard with this contractor to get him actually started on the job, and they finally responded to his calls and his letters that they will get started. So this is strictly a change order to extend the completion date, and the cost for the contract won't change.
So he had to beg them?
I don't believe we begged them. I understand it was that Tracy had pointed out to them that they're close to being at the end of the contract, and if they don't get something, we're gonna default them.
Right.
I don't believe he we we baked them. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item F. An automatic budget supplement of $1,280.85 to the Golf Course Fund.
Make a motion to approve automatic budget supplement of $1,280.85 to the Golf Course Fund Pro Shop Equipment Repairs and Maintenance 620-45130-42530 for hail damage repair of golf carts. Revenue received from SDPAA Claim GC2023115935.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our committee reports. First one, Administrative and Finance. Melissa?
The Administrative and Finance Committee will meet December 3 at 1:00 p.m. I have the 4th. Okay, the 4th? I'm sure Misty's right. December 4.
That'll be the first Monday of December. Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Next meeting will be Thursday, December 7, 8:30 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District met November 8, 2023, at 7 o'clock at the Fall River, the South Enix, Fall River, South Enix. So the meeting was called to order at 7 o'clock Wednesday, November 8, at the South Enix Building by Chairman Mike Lind. Members present were Mike Lind from Custer County, Peg Ryan out of Custer, Rita Reagan from Edgemont, Les Cope, Fall River County, Timmy Burdette, Ulrichs, and myself. Members absent were Dean Weekly, Vice Chairman out of Fairburn, and Dee Anderson from Pringle, and Dan Frieden from Buffalo Gap. All motions were approved unanimously unless otherwise noted. There was a motion by Cope, second by Burdette, to approve the November 8, 2023 agenda. A motion by Reagan, second by Ryan, to approve the September 28, 2023 meeting minutes. And there was a resolution, number 2023-23, for appointing myself, the 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 committee appointed myself, Travis Orbach, to serve as the City of Hot Springs representative, replacing Larry Pratt. The treasurer's report was presented, a motion by Burdette, second by Reagan, to approve So Kerry Barker, the contract, the contact manager, reported Stephen Crop of South Dakota DNR was at the landfill site earlier in the day to conduct a review. So they are out there checking everything out to make sure everything looked okay. So we were talking about soil cover, how the landfill needs to have a certain amount of soil to keep everything down, so to speak. And so there we're talking about having to purchase soil to bring in to place on the The anticipated budget impact will be $20,000. So that the two roll-off containers at the site are meeting the current customers. Barker recommended using any crushed concrete at the landfill site as opposed to packing to packaging and selling. The anticipated budget impact to crush the current concrete received at the site is $30,000. Barker will provide a final figure at the January 2024 board meeting for budgetary consideration. Large piles of tires at the site must be disposed. Currently, there are no tire grant funds available from the state. Barker will provide an estimate during the January 2024 board meeting for budgetary consideration to either cut or shred the tires or haul them away by a company in Scottsbluff, So they talked about changing or streamlining the scale fees assessed to the district. After a review of the annual tonnage received for rubble and solid waste, Barker agreed that a $1 a ton scale fee for the use of the scale at ranchers will be assessed and billed to the district monthly, beginning January 1, 2024. And a separate scale fee will not be charged to customers, rather there will be a single dumping fee and no annual permit required. It was recommended a new customer class be added for concrete and asphalt rubble. Motion by Burdette, second by Ryan, to approve the new fee rates for implementation on January 1, 2024. Talks about the construction of a permanent drop-off building. The current two, the two current roll-off containers provided by Roseanne Enterprises at a cost of $60 is working to contain debris and increase customer safety. So Resolution Number 2023-01 was presented and approved, which will change the rates Heinz reported a 2023 financial assurance fund calculate that the 2023 financial assurance fund calculations will be made in December and presented to DNR for their approval. Once the updated calculation is made, the board can determine the financial strategy to increase the financial assurance funds during the January 2024 board meeting. The board discussed the possibility of the auditor's suggestion to write off the financials for auditing purposes, the 2018-2019 tire shredding grant repayment required by standing rock sanitation and the amount of $18,676.50. Talked about the fees associated with providing credit card payment services and ranchers, the rancher staff is working on validating the machine to meet the vendor's compliance requirements. The current non-validation has resulted in additional fees being assessed to the district. Overall, utilizing this new vendor has resulted in significantly lower merchant swipe fees and lesser costs to the district. Current landfill management contract extension that was effective on January 1, 2021 indicates the contract fees will be renegotiated in 2023 and take effect January 1, 2024. The 2024 preliminary budget was discussed and proposed changes to several line items were made. Final budget figures will be presented during the January 2024 board meeting for further discussion and final approval. Next meeting is scheduled for January 11, 2024, 7:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center, and the meeting adjourned at 8:39 p.m. And these meetings are also available online as well for for the public consumption.
All right. Any questions for Travis?
Or Larry. Larry was there, his final.
You did a good job, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis.
It says Mueller Center. That's what Starla put in her notes, so.
Historic Preservation, Deborah?
We meet next December 6, 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met November 9, 2023, at noon at the Evans Plunge. Present were myself, Chris Hansen, Allison Ritterbush, and Rec Director Gabby Martin. We had an update on the scuba diving. They were gonna schedule an informational meeting for that night on the 9th of November at 5:30 p.m. Jim Wallace from Black Hills Aquatic Adventures will present a program information. The ISG Design Proposal Discussion Committee advised to go back to our city engineer for some design ideas based on the cost of ISG's proposal of $7,000. Also recommended was a computer program from High County. I thought that was supposed to be country. High County?
High Country.
Erectors? Okay. I misspelled it. On a review of monthly incidents, we experienced one incident that was a collision by two lap swimmers. Nobody was seriously hurt. And they certified four new lifeguards on Sunday and will recertify another. Other information, the swim team has new lap lanes and first meet this Saturday in Spearfish. Going forward into Friday practices will be from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon. The U-12 team will begin practice next week on November 15 with Coach Anna. The next meeting will be December 14, 2023, noon at the Evans Plunge, and we adjourned at, I believe it was 12:46 or 12:36. I know I got it. I got it. Any questions?
Yeah, on your awning there, one, where is the money gonna come from? Insurance money? And two, have they got a design ideal as to like what they're gonna do, walk an extension past the flag or gonna come down and build a little roof cricket type thing?
I think that's what they're looking at for they're trying to get a design. And she did not provide us with any design pictures.
Okay.
So.
No idea where the money is gonna come from.
I thought it was gonna be insurance, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a question. You had mentioned computer program and High Country Erectors.
One of the members suggested that Chris contact High Country Erectors because High Country had done a program for them in some doing some building, and she was happy with what they did. So she told Chris that she should go down and and talk with them because they have a computer program that they can just.
Talking about CAD, probably?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So it's putting a design, High Country Erectors is going to put together a design.
Yeah, I think that's what she's looking for right now, and and she thought $7,000 was too much.
Okay. Yeah, I confused myself when you said a computer program, thinking software, and then you were talking about High Country Erectors, and that just didn't connect with me.
Yeah, that that they had a program there that they could probably come up with a design for her.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Linda.
Mm-hmm.
Parks Recreation Beautification, Larry, Linda?
Our next meeting will be this will be Wednesday, December 6, at the Mueller Center at 2:00 p.m. And as a side note, I'd like to say that we're bringing on the Key Hot Springs Beautiful Board so that we have a more working relationship with them in our committee.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning, Deborah?
Planning and Zoning met November 15, 6:00 p.m. at City Council. Members and staff present were Don Olstead, Doreenya, James Forbord, Wayne Higeman, Scott Sogi, and myself. Guest present was Amanda Milbrant. Let's see. Under new business, Fisher Interior Lot Line Revision, Garage Building Permit Pending. After discussion of why the city wants to eliminate the confusing partial lot and legal descriptions described as footages, et cetera, the general consensus was to approve the lot line revision to eliminate confusion and/or orphan accessory buildings in the future. Milbrant Alley Vacating. This is the old Lucy's. Do drop in between them and the historic log cabin resort motel. After discussion of the utility company's easement and the likeliness of the need of a possible easement on the north end of the alley for the motel owners to the west, the neighbors are all in total agreement and the owner's ability to access his adjoining property to the west. The commission agreed to the alley vacating with the utility easement remaining in place. Naughton Bryan Alley Improvement. There was considerable conversation about the access the owner is in need of to his property. After reviewing the plot plan and the street layouts, it was obvious that the access to the property was intended to be the 20-foot-wide street extension on South Sixth Street. This property is clear at the end of this of this street in front of the Mueller Center, down by the the far end trailer court.
1,200 Estates.
1,200 Estates at the base of Sugarloaf and the First Sister. And it's up above in the wooded area, and Sixth Street doesn't go, isn't built all the way to the end that's platted. And the people that bought the property want to access it and make the alleyway that goes on the backside of Bison Storage, their main access to their property. Access from the alley that the owner was attempting was never intended. A 16-foot alley is nearly impossible to create a point of access considering the drainage redesigning and soil retention. It was stated, quote, "There should not be access to private property through a 16-foot wide alley." So those people are gonna have to come up with a better idea. Tiny House Blog. Scott distributed a new South Dakota tiny home regulation pamphlet for reviewing and to see how other South Dakota cities are dealing with tiny homes in their areas. James Forbord offered to research this matter and being his finding, bring his findings to the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Old Business Alley Excavation Site Work Design Regulations, City Ordinance Protection, the Martin Tract PUD Process Final Reading, which was tonight, lot line revision fees. Should we be charging for the city staff to administer the property line changes? There is also the planning and zoning time and efforts to consider. Adjournment was at 7:20 p.m., and our next meeting will be Wednesday, December 15, 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. Questions?
Is there what's the problem with tiny homes?
Just mostly making sure they fit into where they're being put. Ordinances, setbacks.
So it's the same as a regular house, but just tiny as far as setbacks and location?
We're looking into all the issues, you know, whether you can put more than one on a property. Some people are wanting to do little communities. How should those be set up?
So this is anticipatory research?
Yeah, just, you know, looking forward.
So people are submitting, hey, they're they're saying, hey, we wanna we're looking at, we wanna build tiny homes.
And no one's come to us, but we're just trying to.
Preempting or whatever.
Look forward to potential issues.
Any other questions? On Sixth Street, Deborah, getting access to the property on the South End there, is Scott gonna get back in touch with the property owner? Was the property owner, you know, part of the discussion?
I don't think they are, don't know if they're here or not, but he was gonna get back with them. They were removing trees from that alleyway without authorization. I think they took a tree off of adjoining property without those owners. I think they took a tree off of a adjoining property, uh, without those owners' approval. I, they were just, they just came in and started doing stuff, so.
Yeah.
Um, he has to get them, understand what's going on a little better.
Had several meetings with Tracy, uh, and the property owners, uh, and Scott, uh, and the first time they had a discussion, uh, with the gentleman that wanted to access his property. Uh, the city folks came away from that discussion with the understanding that, uh, the access to his property would be on Sixth Street and not via the alley.
Right.
So then when, uh, the folks that have Bison Storage saw someone up there working in the alley, the conversation came back up, what's going on here? Because, um, city didn't, uh, you know, understand that that was going to be the access, that it would be Sixth Street. Um, I'm personally glad to hear that planning and zoning is, uh, recommending that access needs to be on Sixth Street, via Sixth Street and not the alley. Uh, as you had talked about, trying to do something with that alley, given the slope of, uh, the hill that it would have to, to cut through. All right. Thank you. Public Safety, uh, Bill?
Uh, Public Safety will meet Thursday, December seventh, two P M. at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill?
Get to do it tonight.
Mr. Howell has that report.
All right.
Call members present were myself, Bill Lukin, Jeffrey Johnson, Mayor Bob Nelson, City Administrator Bob Nelson, Jr., and Public Works Engineer Tracy Bashan. There were no members of the public present. The agenda was adopted and published. There were no communications from the public. On the new business, water usage at five oh one North River Streets, a readout of electronic water meter for the address was reviewed. There appears to be no evidence of actual water usage based on interviews with the owners. The water meter values appear to be meter electronic issue and not a water usage issue. The committee recommends the count be adjusted. Number two, request received, the City Hermosa wastewater. The City Hermosa proposes disposing of eighteen thousand gallons per day of affluent wastewater via third-party hauler. Wastewater would be from the third final treatment lagoon, as this would be beneficial to the operation of the Hot Springs wastewater treatment plant and provide additional revenue to the enterprise fund. The committee supports this proposal. Fee discussion details will be, be provided by the Finance Department. Three, the incomplete sewer main near Bald Eagle Drive, approximately seventy feet of sanitary sewer main was not installed by the developer and is now needed for a home currently under construction. Home construction contractor has been asked to provide an estimated cost for the installation of the sewer main. A review of the cost will be, need to be done, but the committee supports the completion of the sewer main system. Four, the constant comprehensive plan, the Public Works Action Plan. The committee reviewed an action plan that supports the overall strategic plan described in the city's comprehensive plan and aligns with current budgets. This action plan will be reviewed and updated periodically as needed. There were no departmental summaries or third-day outlook ahead due to road reconstruction support. Active and inactive project information can be found in the current Public Works on the city website. The meeting adjourned at two twenty-eight P M. The next meeting will be November twenty-eighth at one P M. here at Mueller Center.
Bill, anything you'd like to add?
Well, thanks, Hal.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, the handout that I gave you folks, uh, council, uh, Hot Springs Water Rebates, uh, and then Water Rebate Request for Review, uh, goes along with, uh, what Hal was mentioning is that, uh, there was a question about water that was used, uh, on a property on North River Street, uh, and whether it met the city guidelines for waiving that fee or not. Um, in looking at the, uh, water usage, uh, it was clear that, um, the, the meter said some water was, uh, had, had gone through it. But when you actually looked at, um, the meter readings, uh, before the event and after the event, they just didn't make sense. Uh, the, uh, usage per hour, uh, was almost dead on, three hundred gallons an hour. Um, the, the water folks had talked with, uh, the owners, uh, and had asked them to check their toilets. We've, we've seen water usage, uh, if a, a toilet is stuck. Um, so the meter said water flowed through it. It just didn't make sense, uh, in looking at the, the actual data. So in our minds, uh, it met the, the first two, uh, requirements here. Water rebates may be granted when one or more of the following conditions exist. Incorrect meter reading, uh, it certainly wasn't due to the negligence of the city or a faulty water meter. Uh, so when we question whether a meter is faulty or not, then we ask the water department to remove the meter, uh, put a new one in, and send that one in, uh, to, to be tested. So, um, those were the two big things that, uh, contributed to the recommendation that, uh, the, the user shouldn't be charged for the over-usage that the meter said, uh, was there.
And the adjustment that we're recommending is about fourteen dollars.
And that amount would be credited back, uh, to the property owner. Uh, Finance Officers Officer Report, Ariel, do you have anything for us?
It's going to be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving. Our safety loss control survey is tomorrow, so me, Lori, and someone from Safety Benefits will be touring the facilities, making sure everyone's being safe at work. Uh, we were featured in the November Municipal League Magazine. If you haven't seen it yet, we have a copy at City Hall. Trash collection this week. If you're normally on Thursday, we're picking up your trash on Wednesday. And the website is coming along great. The design and site map are finalized, and they're now migrating content still in line to be launched by February ninth. That's it.
Is there a preview of that anywhere?
I do have pictures. I can send them to you.
Of the website?
Yeah.
Does it have a URL you can go to?
They did send me one with the URL, but everyone was having trouble accessing it.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why. It's just, um, like a still photo. It's not.
Just a landing, just a landing page then, essentially, probably. Okay.
You had mentioned you and Lori are going to be going everywhere that the safety folks go?
Yes.
All right. Um, when you're up at Butler Park, uh, and they're taking a look at that, would you ask the safety folks a specific question for us? Uh, we've been working with the Elks Club about some basketball hoops, uh, that they had hoped would have been put up by now. Uh, there's some question about where they want them versus where, as a city, we feel the right location for them is. Uh, so would you ask the safety folks, um, the minimum diff, distance, uh, from the backboard of the basketball hoop to, uh, uh, the fence? You know, what that distance is? Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ariel. Uh, City Administrator, Bob? All right.
It's been six days, seven days, somewhere around?
All right. Um, last week, the City Administrator, Councilwoman Johnston, and I met with the Executive Director of Shedco, Andrea Powers, several business owners and representatives from South Dakota State University to discuss their Exploring and Innovative Rural Communities Conference, Energize, that is coming to Hot Springs on May twenty-second through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Energize is a two-day conference, which takes place each year in a rural community in South Dakota. Organized by SDSU's Extensions Community Vitality Team and a planning team from the community, the conference aims to inspire and excite those trying to improve their own rural communities. A mixture of the keynote speaker, breakout sessions, and evening activities keeps the event fresh and fun while allowing for networking and making connections. Utilizing local businesses to ho, host breakout sessions allows attendees to see more of what makes a community tick, as well as providing free advertising to the businesses. Breakout sessions have included topics such as fundraising for community projects, art and culture in community, youth engagement, housing, and more. Previous conf, conferences have attended, have been attended by up to a hundred and fifty people with a local economic impact of up to thirty thousand dollars during the two-day event. Uh, so we're excited about this. Uh, it was just announced officially last week that, um, Energize would be coming to Hot Springs. Uh, we'll be gearing up for that, working with Shedco and, uh, other folks to, um, make Hot Springs shine. I also want to welcome our new City Administrator. Uh, Bob has jumped right into learning about Hot Springs. He joined our weekly construction meeting on Tuesday morning and the Public Works meetings on Tuesday afternoon. On Wednesday, he met our department heads at their monthly department head meeting, and I had several opportunities to drive Bob around the city so he could get a firsthand look at the community. Along with the other City Hall staff, I'm excited about the municipal government experience Bob is bringing to the position of City Administrator. So right now, we don't have him drinking from the full fire hose. Uh, we'll give him a couple weeks, and, uh, then he gets a full drink.
So I was going to say that looks like that's a Wednesday and Thursday for that conference?
Uh, yes.
So if you're a nine-to-fiveer, you're just not going to participate?
Uh, well, nine-to-five, May twenty-second, you're school out by then?
Oh, maybe it will be.
Yeah.
I don't think about that.
It is.
Yeah, but that is, I, I still work, though.
Talk with the superintendent.
Yeah, I know.
Any questions for me? All right. With that, uh, if I could get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two, one personnel.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Um, there will be no, uh, action taken after executive session. There will be a pause before executive session. Uh, but if I could get our new city attorneys to join council in executive session, uh, we have a bathroom out in, um, lobby area, and executive session itself will be in this first room, uh, off of the theater. Uh, for the public, I don't think this will take long. Uh, council can get pretty chatty from time to time, so I make no guarantees.
Unpick the door.
All right.
Oh, Ariel.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.